So I didn't know if you had the three staff. So now we have the three senior mayor for all Canada. For a moment of quiet contemplation made her reflect over the holidays and friends and family. It's always nice to try.
So I hope everybody had a great break over the holidays and got some well-needed rest, or in my case, lots of alcohol in your system to help make the new year look a little brighter. Does anybody have to leave early today? Hopefully, we'll be wrapped up and home before the bulk of the storm hits us. So listen, we've got a few introductions I'd like to do today. Is GM St. Clair here? Yes, he has some new staff. Go ahead, Jane.
Thank you, Warden. Good morning, County Council, and I'm very pleased to introduce two members of our Health and Emergency Services team. They are sitting at the back of the gallery. I would first like to introduce Jacqueline Dusom, our new Director of Senior Services for Health and Emergency Services. She recently joined our team. Jackie brings to this role a wealth of knowledge and expertise arising from an extensive leadership career in seniors' care, ongoing education and volunteerism, and many community organization and advocacy associations. Starting her career as a nursing assistant, Jackie later obtained a diploma in nursing and has pursued numerous academic achievements through various institutions, including the Rothman School of Management, Queen's School of Business, the Human Resources Professional Association of Ontario, and Georgian College of Applied Arts and Technology. Successfully overseeing retirement living and seniors' independent housing across multiple locations, Jackie has led the development and oversight of human resource planning and performance, operational and capital budgets, regulatory compliance, commercial operations and marketing, along with capital redevelopment, preopening planning and new facility occupancy. In addition, Jackie has forged many partnerships across local communities, associations, provincial and federal levels of government. Of her most recent collaborative initiatives, Jackie has been involved in the oversight of new transitional care units in both acute and retirement living settings. Please join me in welcoming Jackie Dusom to her new position that commenced on January 2nd. And secondly, I would like to introduce Grant Durfee, our new manager of 911 Emergency Management. Grant started with our team again on January 2nd of this year, and he brings to this role impressive and well-developed skills and expertise obtained through an achievement of a Bachelor of Arts from the University of Waterloo, a diploma in primary care paramedic from the College of Health and Technology, a professional certificate in emergency management from York University, and a graduate diploma in emergency management from Wilford-Lawrie University. Grant is continuing with his studies as he pursues a Master's of Arts in disaster and emergency management through Royal Rhodes University. In addition to his extensive education, Grant has gained invaluable experience through various roles with international medical relief and St. John's ambulance medical first response, followed by a career in emergency response services as a paramedic, before moving into his most current role as emergency management program specialist with the region of Niagara. Please join me in welcoming Grant Durfee to his new position with the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane, and welcome aboard to those new employees. And now Jonathan, you have an introduction for us as well.
Yeah, thank you, Warden, and good morning, members of council. I'm likewise pleased to introduce Patrick Trafford beside me up here. Patrick's our new deputy clerk and will be happy to support members of council and members of committee, all councils, committees, as well as the other sort of functions of the county clerk's office, access and privacy, records and information management, accessibility, among others. Patrick is a resident of Wasaga Beach and comes to us with a wealth of experience from the town of Calladen, so welcome to Patrick.
Okay, and thank you. And councillor Blanche, we won't hold it against him that he's a citizen of Wasaga Beach. Okay, can I get the approval of the agenda with... Oh, calling the roll. Sorry, I need my roll call first. Yes, go ahead, Jonathan.
Thank you, Warden.
Give me a few weeks off and I forget my order here.
Thank you, Warden. So all members are in attendance with a few modifications here. We have alternate councillor Catherine McDonald from Midland in attendance. Councillor Dolan's absent. We have alternate councillor Jonathan Scott here in for councillor Leduc, who is absent. Councillor Norcross is absent. Councillor Norris is absent with alternate councillor La Chapelle in attendance. Councillor Sandu is absent, and councillor Brian Smith is absent with alternate councillor Belange in attendance, and you have your quorum. Thanks, Warden.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll go to councillor measures for our approval of the agenda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Good morning, council. The approval of the agenda will be moved by myself and seconded by councillor Fryer that the agenda of the January 9th, 2024, meeting of county council be approved.
Everybody's heard the motion. Any questions on the agenda? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. I look for disclosure appearing to your interest, any member of council on the agenda. See any... Not seeing any here. Presentations and deputations, we have none, so I'll look for the consent agenda motion. Councillor Brickett.
Thank you. Through you, your worship, moved by myself, seconded by councillor Smith, that the council communications and proclamations, November 28, 23, to January 8, 24, have been given due consideration, be received.
Okay, any questions on that item? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. And now we'll do the adoption of the council minutes and the confirmation of the committee. The whole reports, Deputy Warden, come.
Thank you. Good morning, your worship, and through you. Moved by myself and seconded by councillor Locks, that the following joint council and committee of the whole minutes be confirmed as adopted. Joint council and committee of the whole minutes, November 28, 2023, and confidential joint council and committee of the whole minutes, November 28, 2023.
Any questions arising from the minutes? Not seeing any. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Presentations and considerations of special reports and committees, we have none. Considerations of county officers' reports, we have none. Motives, which notices have been previously given, we have none, and notices of motion, I don't remember receiving any, so none. And now council is to move in the committee of the whole. So could I have a mover to move in the committee of the whole? Councillor Anderson, seconded by councillor Bell. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. I would look for, I guess, our city reps, I think some of them are here, and look for roll call again. Mr. Clerk?
Thanks, Warden. In addition to the roll call just mentioned for council, we have the city reps in attendance, with the exception of councillor Durnford from Aurelia sends regrets, Aurelia Mayor Mackayzak sends regrets, and Barry councillor Riema sends regrets, with all others in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Aurelia councillor Fowles is here. Welcome. I know your work schedule makes it tough for you to join us now, so I'm glad you could make it today. So again, I will look for a motion. What one am I after? Approval of the agenda, councillor measures.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Council, for the approval of the committee of the whole agenda, I'll look for a mover and seconder, Deputy, or sorry, Deputy Mayor, my friend, councillor Van Staeveren from Clearview, and councillor Locks, that the agenda of the January 9th, 2024, meeting of the committee of the whole be approved.
Everybody's heard the motion. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Do I have a disclosure appearing to your interest on anything in the committee of the whole? Not seeing any, so presentations and delegations, again, we have none of those, so now I'll appoint Chair McDonald, if you want to take human services, please.
Thank you, Warden. So we'll go down to 18 for the human services consent item. We only have one on it, the following consent item, having been given due consideration, be received, but can I ask for a mover and seconder, please? Councillor McLeven and councillor Fryer, and that the following consent item be given due consideration, be received, and it's 18.1, it's a letter dated November 28, 2023 from the town of New Tecumseh regarding the support for Town of Aurora's resolution gender-based and intimate partner violence epidemic. Is there anyone that wishes to poll or wishes to speak to this? If not, can all in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. Next, I'll go on to humans... Hang on, we just finished that one. We're moving right along here today. Corporate services, chair measures.
All right, thank you very much, your worship. In this section, we have the consent items for the item 20.1. It's a Federation of Canadian Municipalities, Municipalities Where Canada Grows report, and so for this, I will look for a mover and seconder, Mr. Smith and Snell, councillor Snell, and that the following consent items, having been given due consideration, be received. Does anybody have any questions on this? Yes, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say thank you to this house for the opportunity to sit on FCM for this term. It's been a great learning curve. We've been trying to develop a new municipal growth framework, as I was a short report, but just the fact that they've actually identified the number for infrastructure for every new housing start, there's 107,000 worth of infrastructure that has to go with the funding that the feds currently give, so it just, we're developing or working on a platform to change that, actually going out to municipalities to support that, so I just want to thank this house.
Thank you very much, councillor Smith, and thank you for representing us at FCM. Any other members with any questions? Seeing none, well, we have a mover and seconder, and I'm prepared to call the motion. All in favor? And I'll say that carries. Also underneath corporate services, we have forestry. There's a request for an exemption to remove woodlands under forestry conservation bylaw. I will look for a mover and seconder, and then I'll read the motion, then we'll have a discussion. So I'll look for a mover and seconder on CCW 2024-002. I see the deputy warden and councillor Fowler. Thank you very much. So I'll read the item, that CCW 2024-002 dated January 9, 2024, regarding a request for an exemption to forest conservation bylaw number 6894 be received, and that the county council grant an exemption to allow the removal of 0.9 hectares of woodland at 1065 Centerline Road in the township of Clearview substantively in the form attached to Schedule 1 of item CCW 2024-002. Is there any discussion on that matter, or the staff... Yes, I see. Okay, councillor Van Staeveren?
Thank you. In regards to this application, it is in our jurisdiction, which our council has unanimously supported. It's a good example of proper application process for the removal of woodlot for a farmer in order to improve his cultivated acres and make it more manageable, and it definitely deserves our support in this regards.
Thank you very much. Is there any others? Councillor, or sorry, Director Elliott, do you have any comments you'd like to add to this request?
No, thank you through the chair. I would echo your comments, councillor Van Staeveren. The process that was followed, the application was for a slightly larger amount of woodland to be cleared, but working with the local municipality, the conservation authority, and our forestry staff, and EIS was completed, we honed that down to what we felt was an appropriate amount of forest to be removed, and that culminated in the recommendation before you today.
All right, thank you very much, Director. If there's nothing further, we have a mover and seconder, so I'm prepared to call the motion. All those in favor? That carries. Thank you. Moving on, we have corporate services planning. This is regard to county council, regional review submissions to the provincial standing committee at CCW 2024-019. I'll look for a mover and seconder, and then I'll read the motion. Is there a mover and seconder on this, Mr. La Chapelle and Mr. Bell? Is that correct? Yes, thank you. And I will read the motion, that item CCW 2024-019 dated January 9, 2024, being an update on the review of regional governance as overseen by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing be received, and that the warden and staff make an oral and/or written submission to the Standing Committee on Heritage Infrastructure and Culture Policy that confirms the positions, recurrent positions of the county council and reflects the key supporting themes outlined in report CCW 2023-146. First of all, do the staff, Director Elliott, do you have any comments you'd like to add to this, before we ask for comments from the...
Thank you through the chair. I'm sure most members of council would be aware of the fact that the Standing Committee is holding meetings. There's a number yet to be held. The initially-held one in the city of Barry, the county did not make representation at that particular event. We've been advised that they're scheduling something to be held in Simcoe County, but in order to preserve our rights, we are requesting support from this house in order to make a submission which is due today. We would anticipate making a written submission and likely an oral submission in the city of Vaughan, which is the next and most local community that we could participate in. The report outlines four themes. These are reaffirmed by, or confirmed rather, by previous council recommendations and positions, outlining the value of two-tier government in Simcoe County, specifically how we are unique, and along the planning lines, we think there's a strong opportunity to continue with two-tier planning, but building on greater clarity about the two roles, and even if there's not a legislative responsibility for the planning function, we think that we should continue with a prescribed role. All the regions and the county have our own uniquenesses, and what we want to position is what Simcoe County offers and why we're unique, and why the province needs to look at each of the regions and the county of Simcoe under its own jurisdiction and its own light. So we're seeking that direction to make those submissions, and hopefully we'll get your support today for that.
All right, thank you very much, Director Elliott. Any members with any questions? The mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
Barry, the mayor.
Quick question. With regards to the submission that's going to go in from the county, is the submission focused on steady as she goes, or is there going to be a request for any additional services or integration with the city of Barry?
Thank you through the chair. In the report, we've highlighted that we appreciate, and I believe most of you would also appreciate the fact, that one of our greatest challenges to accomplishing the housing targets that the province has set is in regards to infrastructure, looking at things from a long-term perspective, coordination, long-term planning, large investments. We are not making a recommendation on what that might look like, other than to say that a regional lens on the planning for that long-term infrastructure to support housing is something that the province needs to reconsider.
So just to, I mean, that was a very political answer, so I want like a very direct answer. Is there going to be any request from Simcoe County that implicates a regionalization of infrastructure that would tap into the city of Barry's and the taxpayer of Barry's services and infrastructure as it stands today?
Maybe I'll answer that one.
We'll let the warden go.
No, we've made no such request. That would have to be discussed at this house. Any request that I can present as warden has to be something approved by this house in advance, and that's what you see the reports that's in front of us today, and it's more with streamlining planning based on the discussions we've had around this house. It's very difficult. This is our first day where we've actually had any discussion on this subject, and of course, with the deadline coming later today. So we've had to present a position that we know is, I hope, supported by the house here today. So as you see, there's nothing in that report. I can't make suggestions on behalf of this house without this house agreeing to those suggestions. Now, I can't say what's going to happen when the presentations come to individual municipalities when they present their case to the province of Ontario, but the position that will come from me as warden will be the position of this house voted on and agreed upon by this house, and as you can see, it's not in that report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden.
Sorry, Mr. Warden, and number two, it says the regional coordination of growth. So if that regional coordination of growth is something that doesn't rely on the city of Barry, and it's referring to the municipalities that are fully within the county working together, I completely endorse and support all of that. If it is an approach that's saying the regional coordination of growth should be tapping into all infrastructure that's either going into Georgian Bay or into Lake Simcoe, because sewer is the most difficult, I have an issue with that, so it's hard for us from the city of Barry to look at it and say, we fully support this, if I don't know what those words mean, like the word regional.
Well, one of the things we have to coordinate, and we do with your cities, is busing, of course, things like that, when we've got to build roads from, say, one subdivision, and we know people are trying to get to the city of Aurelia, they're trying to get to the city of Barry, they're trying to get to Bradford, to the larger hubs. We have to have some coordination role over the official plans so that we know where development's coming, so that we can be prepared for it, as opposed to, which was originally proposed, no planning department at all at Simcoe County level. Well, how do you operate a county with no planning department when all of a sudden, I'll use mine, Remera Township decides to put in a 600-home subdivision on the end of a county road that's not designed for that type of traffic? There's got to be somebody planning regionally where growth is at a larger scale.
And, Mr. Warden, I completely support that within the county of Simcoe. I guess my concern is if it's not defined that it's within the county of Simcoe borders that you're referring when you use the word, and I say you, because you're going to be representing the county, when you're using the word regional, then the interpretation is very broad, and the response from the city will essentially be what you're already feeling. We don't endorse the idea of a regional approach to the billion dollars we've put in in wastewater and water services.
Yeah. I'd like to just interject, if I may, as the chair, just to highlight a point that the separated cities' members of committee of the whole are not voting members of this issue, right? But we do appreciate your input very much so, okay? So I just wanted to clarify with anybody in the house who might have been wondering, I don't mind anybody speaking, to be quite honest, as long as we all have good information. So I appreciate that. All right, we're going to move on. I had councillor Evans. Did you put up your hand? And then I recognize the alternate councillor Scott, and then I see Hamlin. Okay, go ahead. Dave, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the opportunity. Speaking on behalf of some of the more rural members of this house, I, we are in full support of a dual-level tier-two planning procedure on a number of levels. We're in a unique amalgam. Simcoe County is of urban and rural, something that is going to be in place for foreseeable future, and frankly, on many levels, we do not, as a rural, speaking of a rural component, have the infrastructure to be able to, just on a management side, to be able to deal with the changes that are being thrust on us right now. The biggest issue that we have on a concrete level is concrete, is infrastructure. We are looking at implementing seppage water that are, in some cases, three to four times the size of our annual budget. So these projects are frankly, you know, unrealistic and unattainable. So if we're going to provide better services at a cheaper cost to our constituents, we have to work with our neighbors, and that's what we do. And from where I sit, and sitting next to me and everybody else in this house, we work together to find the most efficient, cost-efficient, and expeditious solution that we can. So I'm fully in favor of a unique presentation to the Standing Committee. Our rules do need to evolve. We've got a lot of new people living in Simcoe County, and we're growing in the fastest than any county is in Ontario, so we're going to have to evolve and be innovative and come up with new solutions, but I see that as an opportunity for synergies, both within our organizations and developing and finding new solutions that, again, less cost, better services. So fully in support of this, Chair, and look forward to the presentation, and best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Evans. We're going to go to alternate councillor Scott next, then it'll be Hamlin, then it'll be Anderson, and then Cox. Alternate councillor.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jonathan Scott. I'm the Ward Two councillor in Bradford, which is colloquially called the older end of town. It's the eastern part of town and a portion of the Hall and Marsh. We have our municipal budget today, so the mayor and deputy mayor are chairing that meeting, and you're stuck with me, because we did want to make a few comments about this issue. Bradford's long-held that regional government in general, and Simcoe County in particular, needs thoughtful, meaningful renewal and reform, and frankly, going back over 40 years, Simcoe County itself has had numerous reports recommending service delivery improvements, governance reform, changes to rules and responsibility as between single and upper-tier governments. So we think there's more alignment here than political rhetoric might suggest, and this report makes clear areas where Bradford can agree with the county, but also leaves some areas unaddressed that we believe are vitally important matters requiring thoughtful reform. Speaking for Bradford, our positions are based on key principles and values endorsed by our council this term and going back over a decade or more. We can't miss this opportunity, and we're grateful for the province for including Simcoe County in regional governance reform to fix the flaws that I think we all recognize exist in municipal government. We were put in place over a century ago. Last meaningful reform was before I was born, so we think there is a good opportunity to make thoughtful reform. I'm going to highlight and quote from a few sections of the report where we agree. "The need for a coordinated housing and infrastructure delivery system is most important and more urgent than in the past." We agree. We have a housing affordability crisis, and I can point to several projects in my own ward, basic infill projects, where review was duplicative between the county and between the local planning processes, and that caused unnecessary delays. Further, regional-scale coordination of growth also facilitates the optimization of infrastructure delivery. We agree with that notion, especially the notion of regional-scale planning potentially continuing. We do not need Simcoe County duplicating provincial growth plan exercises, nor do we need Simcoe County duplicating local planning review, but what we do need is regional-scale coordination of regional-scale infrastructure, particularly water, also transit. So we agree there with the words as written about regional-scale matters, and I think it's also important that it mentions climate and the environment there as well. it's also important that it mentions climate and the environment there as well. And then further on this point, it says the county is the stewards of regional systems that span local municipal boundaries. We agree, and we especially agree with the notion that local municipalities also need to be better equipped to plan within settlement areas, develop their neighborhoods, and process development approvals. A system where Simcoe County sticks to its knitting, so to speak, on regional matters leaves local leaders better able to manage local planning. We actually think there is, someone used the word synergy already, to have both systems working in concert, but that means we each have to stick to our knitting. And then finally, there's the notion that Simcoe County is unique. Yes, we agree, that's entirely the point. No one is advocating for the elimination of regional government, at least in Simcoe County, maybe they are in York Region or in Peel, but we also require recognition that within Simcoe County, Bradford is also unique. We all are. Parts of the county, as we mentioned earlier, are rural and even part of college country and you have your own unique challenges. My town, we're a suburban community now. When I started undergrad, we were a farming community of 12,000, will be 50,000 in the next year, and we're very much a suburb and we're very much a part of the GTA. We face difficult and unique challenges with massive residential, commercial, and industrial growth. We're the largest urban center actually in the county. We're the southernmost municipality, the most diverse population, and also the youngest. Our needs are increasingly those of the GTA in general: traffic gridlock and transit, housing affordability and building up supply, equity, diversity, and inclusion issues, and how to address a younger town with far more immigrants. So the one thing that we find is glaringly absent from this report, it does a great job on planning, but what it doesn't talk about is that this regional governance reform exercise is manifestly about more than just planning. It's also about roles and responsibilities, division of those responsibilities, and more fundamentally about democracy. And here, I think we can all agree that there is area for improvement within Simcoe County because the county has tried in the past, but just hasn't, to borrow a phrase, got it done when it comes to reform of the governance of the county. It's simply a reality that a governance structure where every municipality, regardless of population, has two votes and two representatives, doesn't accord with effective representation or representation by population, which is a principle of Canadian law. So if a town of 10,000 and a town of 50,000 each have two representatives, each have two votes, that's not actually democratic and that's not actually going to lead to effective governance. Yes, there is the weighted vote system, and perhaps we should have, as Simcoe County made that automatic with technology earlier this term, but the power of the vote isn't necessarily the whole thing. It's also holistically about representation more broadly. So in a perfect system, we would have something like other regional councillors have where the composition of this house is based on the population of the municipalities. So speaking for Bradford, we'll continue to make our case to the province. We're very proud of having an effective working relationship with the province because we do see areas where we agree with Simcoe County, but we also see the need for governance reform to better accord with representation by population and effective representation. So our goals are very simple, they're based on core values, and we're happy to see this report because we generally agree with the planning aspect, but we would just inject that democracy aspect and say that is also a fundamental part of the exercise that the province is doing. And sorry, that was a bit long.
Thank you very much. I'll just give you a comment back, and that is that we do acknowledge that democracy does seem to be prevailing right now in the fact that we have the alternate councillor program in place such that you're here and your community is represented. So I think that there's a lot to be said about how democracy works in our organization here. So thank you very much for bringing those points forward. The warden would like to respond to something there you said, I think, so he's asked to do that, and I'll give him the pleasure to do that.
We will be looking at our governance again this term. We look at it every single term of council. It's something the Governance Committee will present probably in 2024. And every single time, we put it to the House and we have a vote on it and a weighted vote on it. And we did look at a structure just last term, I've been here that long that I think I'm up to term six or eight now, I don't even remember, where we're looking at that very structure, where we were coming one representative from each municipality and in members at large to represent the populated areas. The town of Bradford didn't support that position. So is there a new change of heart on where Bradford feels on the weighted vote? Because that was proposed and it wasn't supported by the town of Bradford. The status quo was supported by the town of Bradford.
So I'm tempted to say with due respect, you just proved my point. Simcoe County has been trying to reform the composition of Simcoe County council for longer than I've been alive, and it's time, as I said, to borrow a phrase, and get it done. I don't think that was exactly what Bradford's position was last term. I believe we did favor more of a regionalization ward system across the county, but certainly anything that brings us in line with the charter right to effective representation, the common law right to representation by population, I think we could find our way to supporting that. And one of the good things about the provincial exercise is that provincial standing committee, I was there when my mayor presented in November, it has MPPs who are former municipal and regional councillors from Niagara. They understand the issue even better than we do. And I think in general, anything that brings county council more in line with representation by population, and dare I even say reduces the number of politicians, is a good thing. And Bradford, I can't speak on behalf of my mayor or deputy mayor, but they'd be amenable to something like that. But the point you raised that Simcoe County's tried and failed to reform itself is the point we're making.
All right, thank you very much. It's good to have a good debate, I appreciate that. We're going to move on to councillor Hamlin. Councillor Hamlin?
Thank you so much, Chair. I'm going to reluctantly not support this, only because we haven't had an opportunity at our council to consider the issues that are raised by this report and where our town should sit in it. We have a different challenge than Bradford, which is we're at the extreme west end of the county. And we have found ourselves looking more and more to our neighbors in South Georgian Bay, which of course, we're the hub of South Georgian Bay, Callingwood, having, you know, most of the businesses, the services, most of the recreation facilities, the shopping, the hospital and so on. So when we look to what do we do about our infrastructure, we're looking, you know, as much to Town of Blue Mountain, because I know the county hasn't had an opportunity to involve itself in the role of how are we going to help municipalities that need to expand infrastructure. I believe prior counties have decided that's not a role for this house to be engaged in. And even when we look to where are we running our buses, where are we going, how are we planning our recreation facilities, we're looking to municipalities not in Simcoe County. Not to say there aren't good points in here, and I certainly appreciate the role that the county brings and the advantages that we have, but I do think there's some discussion to be had around the roles and responsibilities of the county and the municipalities. And I look forward to that discussion. We'll have it at our municipal council at some point, and I know we'll engage in more of that here. And I also, before I finish, wanted to mention growth management because we received our allocation of employment and housing from the county, as everyone did. We have been working hard to meet that target in our newly-approved official plan, but we noticed that other municipalities are also approving well beyond what they've been allocated. And we just, you know, one of the issues, I'll just say, on the growth management side, is there going to be any discussion about that? Because we're planning for infrastructure, for our growth, but other municipalities, are they taking it or should, how should we be handling that? So again, that comes down to roles and responsibilities, and I look forward to the discussion. And thank you for raising this.
All right, thank you very much councillor Hamlin. Now we're going to have councillor Anderson and then councillor Cox. Councillor Anderson, Friar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple, one comment and then one question. And I must defend the House on the comment that was made earlier, that this house has tried and failed to change itself. Oftentimes, there are reviews, and as the warden indicated, almost every term there is a review. That review allows this house to have a discussion on the efficiencies and how it operates. And it has been time and time again that the House has decided that it operates efficiently enough to maintain it. That's not a tried and failed task, that's a review that happens every time. And as happens with any projects, when you review, for example, a bylaw, the same thing. If the bylaw is fine, it doesn't get changed. My question, I guess, to staff, and if I could get just a few more details as to what the thought process would be presented to the standing committee. I'm a firm believer, and I think the province has indicated, that they would want to remove the planning authority from the county of Simcoe. I'm a firm believer of that. So I'm looking for confirmation as to, is the county just looking to have that position where it's a commenting authority to local municipalities and lower-tier municipalities on planning matters? Could I get some clarification, please?
Thank you very much councillor. Director Elliott, do you wish to answer that or pass that to other staff?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. For clarity's sake, even if there's not a legislative authority for planning function within the county, which we think there's a room to maintain that, the role of the county planning function, in our view, is best served as where and when to grow. We want to leave those local planning decisions to the local municipalities in terms of what the feel and look of your communities would be, but in terms of optimizing, you know, the very costly investments around roads and infrastructure and all those types of things, we think the county has a very, very important role to make sure that we all are achieving or working towards achieving those growth targets, particularly the housing targets set by the province. So allocating growth to communities tied to infrastructure investments to make sure that they're utilized in the most efficient and effective way, we do believe that there is a role for the county planning function moving forward.
Councillor Anderson?
If I may, just as a follow-up, I do see trouble in that. I do believe that the official plan of the county has done its diligence over the 30 or 40 years to say, here, everybody needs to be in some sort of conformity, and I understand that. And I know as we here in the House have our due diligence as well to maintain the county's services. But I don't believe, I think it was an error with the previous provincial government to have growth targets. If municipality is able to service growth in its municipality, no one should be able to tell them that you can't grow or that you can only grow so much. So I think in that sense, if a municipality is able to handle the growth, there needs to be, again, consultation, but not direction.
Director Elliott?
Thank you, through the chair. Maybe a little bit of clarity and confusion that has existed over the years around the planning function, particularly the growth plan in Ontario. Historically, one could have interpreted growth targets as caps, and there was a point in time where they were very much seen as caps. Recent iterations around the growth plan were really around making sure that investments and planning decisions were made to make sure that a minimum amount of housing and development could occur. So we think that minimum is important because how would you achieve across the province the 1.5 million homes that are targeted? But to our point, we think that we've got to find that right balance between making sure that that land is available for that growth while optimizing infrastructure that crosses our 16 or 18 municipalities that comprise the county of Simcoe, and making sure that we make road investments and transit investments and water sewer investments that are optimized and not wasted, and we don't want to compete with each other. We look at things like the fact that there's, you know, only four provincially significant employment zones across the county, yet we've got 16 local municipalities, we've got one airport, you know, we've got a myriad of transit options available. So looking at this from a regional lens actually optimizes duals investments and mitigates the impact on our taxpayers and those who pay development charges. So we think having that broad lens across decisions at the macro level is a very important role for the county to continue to have in the future.
Thank you very much, Director. Thank you councillor Anderson. We're going to move on to Chair Cox, and then I have councillor Friar, and hopefully we can get to a vote.
I'll be short and sweet. I think this whole presentation is something that has come up because the government threw these dates out. And if we don't, as a county, make some type of presentation being that we all can't agree here today, or we all may agree after a meeting, we need to at least tell the government that we're here. They have not even given us the opportunity to have a meeting in Simcoe County. Other areas are also running to other areas, and in my opinion, it's very disorganized. And I would prefer the fact that we say something than nothing. And I know that many of us will be going back to our councils and our CAOs to say, how do we feel about this? We will have more discussions on it. I'm sure the warden has said that they are going to look into a fact that, you know, this Regional Governments Committee should be coming to our area and hearing us speak. And it's the beginning of a new year, and I believe we all need to go back and look at things, but we also have to remember that right now, we are a united team. And, I mean, I could go on about how I live in the north and we don't get quite as much as what the south does and all these things, and schools are a prime candidate. We're sitting up there, you know, with growth too, but it goes down. But there's no point in doing that. This is something we have to look at as a beginning of how we're going to deal with this, and let the warden go down and let the CAO go down, make this presentation and have discussions. And I'm assuming, and my other point was, is that this will come forward to the CAO and the planners' meetings, and that this will be a discussion about how the municipalities and when we will have an opportunity to speak to this committee? Can anyone answer that?
Warden?
Yes, I can. And one of the things that I'm going to make a direct request from the minister is that we do have one of these meetings in this house where all the 16, well, let's say 18, the two separated cities, and all the municipalities here can make their presentation. And I'm going to say that would be a political presentation. I would push that one would be for us, and if they want to do a public one where they include all the public, this location is not large enough, do that where you see fit. This is one I want to see here, that each individual council can make your own presentation.
And just supplemental, we do all have different views and we all are in different places with this growth, and this growth has come fast and furious for many of us, and we're all trying to get ready for it. So I just think right now, we should all be doing what we do, but I think we should still remember that we're in here as a house and we are Simcoe County members and we're a team. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Cox. I have councillor Friar, go ahead.
Thank you, acting Chair Meers, and I'm very pleased to hear the warden's comments because when I brought it up a couple of meetings ago, that I noticed where these meetings had been set, and there wasn't one in Simcoe County, I expressed my concern. And we were told there was going to be one. I appreciate the fact we have to be proactive and there's not one and we need to get to the table. I do appreciate the fact that you're going to be promoting the idea that they come to this chamber. I also look forward to the eventual discussion about our governance model because I have my feelings about that as well. But for now, what I wanted to do was explain and clarify my reasons why I'm supporting the report as it is presented. I know, it's been noted earlier that there's going to be the chance for municipalities to put in their own position, and our council certainly will have an opportunity and will do that, I'm certain. And I didn't think there was anything in the report that if we felt some different wording or a different position needed to be put forward, there wouldn't be any reason why we couldn't as a municipality. So that's, I just wanted to talk about that. Mayor Hamlin's totally correct. We have a unique problem up in Callingwood because of, and it was interesting because just this past weekend, I was reading about when Callingwood Township ceded from Simcoe County 170 years ago, and that was over Simcoe County's decision to invest in the railway. And I'm thinking about a regional meeting we're having on Thursday with Town of Blue Mountains and Clearview and Musaga, and we're talking about our regional water plant. And I'm thinking, well, I wonder if in 170 years, we'll have something happen between the county levels because of this water plant. But that's just a little bit of history. In any event, what I'm saying is, I think there's a lot of moving parts, and Callingwood certainly is not, you know, unique in that in any way, shape, or form. But the reality is, is the province is asking for input, and I think Simcoe County has to put a position forward, and I do support the position you're putting forward right now. And I look forward to our discussions at the municipal level and determining what our council is willing to put forward. So I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Friar. There's nothing further from the floor. I'll just add a couple of points that I'll add, and then I'll call for the motion. Councillor Friar, you're actually incorrect in one point, there was a meeting here in Simcoe County. It was held in November. It had a really short turnaround timeline with a deadline, and I give credit to Mayor Le Duke for taking that opportunity. He caught that and he attended that meeting as the only representative from this whole area that did attend that meeting. And so I thought it was very prudent that we asked for an additional meeting here. The warden's comment about having a meeting up here is an excellent one, and I think that that will be very, very good for all of us. that that will be very, very good for all of us. So I just want to add. Mr. Warden, go ahead.
Thank you. And on that one, and I want to clearly consider this as well, Barry made it very clear today they're a separated city. And that was not a meeting in Simcoe County.
Fair enough.
And if we wanted to tag that to this motion even, as part of our presentation, that we request a meeting in this council chambers, I would not be offended by that. I'm going to present that myself to the minister, but I see no harm in including that amendment in this presentation that we make to the province, that we request a meeting here for our local municipalities in this council chambers.
I'll consider you a mover for the amendment. Thank you. Was there a secondary on the amendment? Councillor Bell, thank you. Mr. Clerk, if you could prepare that, that'd be fine. In the meantime, I'm going to go back to councillor Fryer. He has a comment. No problem, thank you.
I was just going to clarify, I was only referring to the meetings that were set by the province, those six meetings that didn't include us. That's all I was referring to.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah. Anyway. All right. I'll give a pause here for a moment and let the clerk to add that up.
Make this request to the standing committee.
Fair enough.
Oh, hello. Go ahead. I'll just briefly say this. The meeting in Barry, I mean, I agree, the mayor of Barry made the point they're not part of the county. But Mayor Le Duke and Mayor Lehman presented, I just did Margaret Prophet from one of our environmental agencies. I believe the mayor of Oro Madanti and the CAO of Vinnisville were also in attendance taking notes. So there were several municipalities there. I also just very briefly wanted to comment, this is no longer a regional facilitator or a expert consultation. It is a standing committee of the legislature. So they have their typical roadshow tour, and they may well host a venue here, but we would, any of us who present it, would be witnesses, essentially deputations, and they're not really doing workshops or that sort of thing. They're a formal standing committee of the legislature that's touring the province.
Understood. Thank you very much for the correction. Again, it was a really short timeline turnaround, so congratulations to all those that caught it in October, November. Yes, go ahead, Randy.
Thank you. Just a quick correction, it was not Mayor Lehman, it was Mayor Nuttall that was there.
Correct. It was Nuttall, yes.
No, just so the record's right. And we found out fourth hand that the meeting took place, or we would not have been aware of it.
They're both very tall. Apologies for the confusion.
Very tall. I forgot his name a minute ago, what can I say? Mr. Clerk?
Thanks, Mister Chair. I've drafted a motion here, and I'll just look to the warden to make sure it reflects the intent. The motion reads that the main motion be amended to add the following clause, that the warden request to the Standing Committee on Heritage, Infrastructure and Cultural Policy, that a meeting be held to consult Simcoe County municipalities on the governance review being considered by the Standing Committee.
I think we would like the meeting here. Is it a meeting, or would you call, what do you call it again, a hearing?
A hearing.
A hearing beheld at Simcoe County Administration. Would you put to receive presentations from the Simcoe County councils, or Simcoe County municipalities?
Which would include our separated cities.
Yes, it would.
Thank you.
So just with that clarification, I have a motion that reads that the warden request to the Standing Committee on Heritage, Infrastructure and Cultural Policy, that a hearing be held at the Simcoe County Administration Centre to consult and receive representations by Simcoe County municipalities on the governance review being considered by the Standing Committee.
Okay, so the mover would be the warden and seconded by Mr. Bell. Is there any questions on that? By a show of hands, or is there, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Councillor Gordon?
Thank you. Just a quick note, as I've been listening to the conversation today, I think the one thing we can take solace from is that, you know, it's important that we participate in these things. I think remaining silent is silly, like, we need to be there. But I think it feels like the province has done with the violent shaking of the snow globe. Some of the knee jerk type reactions we saw earlier on the term, virtually everything's been walked back. There's a very different tone coming from the premier and the new cabinet. You'll see Minister Clarke is still doing what Minister Clarke does. If you look at what's just happened in Peterborough, you know, for those who follow the news about that affordable housing thing and just these arbitrary last minute letter, anyway, I won't get into it, but, so it looks like the problem may have been the person and just the way that person makes decisions. And the province seems to have taken a different tone now. So it doesn't look there's any violent reshaping of municipalities and regional governance. I think they're going through the review because it's the right thing to do, it's reasonable. But I think that that defensive posture that we all had when we, you know, we saw Peel basically being ripped apart, and, you know, all kinds of boundary changes and all these things, everything's been walked back. So I'm not suggesting that, you know, we think that everything's fine and rosy, but I think that a lot of the concerns we had, and to make sure that our voice is heard and our hand is seen above our peers in the crowd, I believe that we could pump the brakes a little bit more on this and not be as concerned about it. Let's participate in the process collaboratively. But I think, you know, maybe I'm wrong. I guess history will prove me wrong if I am. I don't think the province is looking to make any violent changes to anything in the province right now. It looks like they're working on a reconciliatory tone to make sure that they, you know, have another term. So credit to them, credit to the county for participating in these things, but I really believe that we're in more of a workshopping mode right now rather than self-preservation. That's just my take on it.
All right.
I'm not sure if that's shared by everybody else.
Thank you very much. You know, I'd just like to comment back to your comment there, councillor, and that is that the words were spoken by councillor Anderson a minute ago about being efficient. Certainly, the position of the county is to be efficient and effective in delivery of services that serve the entire area. And those are, those comments are in the report, those comments, I'm sure, will be spoken by the warden and the CAO when they make an opportunity to make this presentation, because it is about efficiencies and effectiveness, and that's what we're trying to do here. So I appreciate that. On the amendment, is that right, councillor? Okay, councillor Hamlin?
Yes, thank you. I was just wondering if we could sever off the last, the amendment that's just up there, because I would like to support that. As I indicated earlier, I can't support the beginning part. Thank you.
We could do it as a separate motion, then? Is that what you'd be looking for, councillor?
Yeah, that we just vote on it separately from the first part of the motion, vote on the amendment separately. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, you can prepare that. Are you clear with that?
Yeah, we can make a motion to divide the question, or you can go ahead, Chair, if you feel the, if you'd like to take a motion to divide the question, we can consider that.
It's my style to always take the, you know, in a committee form, to take advice from people. So I would say, go ahead and divide it.
Okay.
We've got time.
So we can go back to the first one, if you'd like. The original motion?
Well, okay, we'll go back to the original motion. So we're going to halt discussion, we'll go back to the original motion that as, geez, I've forgotten the mover and secondary on that. Oh, it was Les Chappell and Bell. Thank you very much. And the original motion still stands. I'm not going to reread it unless there's any questions. Seeing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor? Are they opposed? Thank you, noted. That'll be carried. This will be now a second motion, an amendment, an additional motion, sorry. Tim, would you like to say something while he's typing? Councillor Fryer?
What I want to do is actually correct myself from something I said earlier, because when I spoke about the regional meeting on the water plant, I'm pretty sure I mistakenly said Wasaga.
Yes.
And of course meant New Tecumseh.
Yes.
So before my fellow councillors from Wasaga are trying to check their calendars on what meeting I was talking about, I better correct that.
Councillor McClellan, you'll be there. Did you want to say something?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I would just like to speak to what the mayor, councillor Gordon, said, is that we all were interviewed by facilitators years ago, and it all went away. So, you know, they've always got that information that they never shared with us, so it's not like it's a whole new ballgame for them, it's just a different time.
All right. Thank you. We've got an alternate, or a secondary motion on the floor, and it's moved by the warden and seconded by councillor Bell. Let the warden request that the Standing Committee on Heritage, Infrastructure and Cultural Policy, that a hearing be held at the Simcoe County Administration Centre to consult and receive representations by Simcoe County municipalities on the governance review being considered by the Standing Committee. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'm prepared to call the motion. All in favor? That carries, thank you. Is there opposed? No, okay, thank you. And there's another motion? And that's it. We're done. Thank you very much. Council, we're going to move on to Corporate Services Engineering. There is a discussion here in regards to CCW 2024-010. It's the Township of Clearview, County Road 9, Centreline Road, and the 3-4 side road speed limit reduction request. So it's a pretty substantial request. Again, I'll put it on the floor, and I'll read the motion, which is on the second page. So a mover and secondary on this? Is there a mover and secondary on this motion? Where are we at? Mr. Greenlaw and Mr. La Rose, thank you. So that will be that CC item, CCW 2024-010 dated January 9, 2024, regarding a speed reduction, uh, speed reduction request on County Road 9 be received, and that the existing speed limit of 80 kilometers per hour on County Road 9 be maintained, and that the county continue to monitor the recent intersection improvements and work collaboratively with the Township of Clearview to implement further mitigation efforts and safety enhancement as deemed necessary. Does anyone like to speak to this? The warden's up first.
Just on the very last paragraph kind of says the majority of this message, there were issues at that intersection, absolutely. It was summer traffic, and a lot of work's been done in that area in September. So we would like to now ride out the winter and monitor next summer and see if we've actually taken care of the problems, which we are quite confident we have, but we'd like to get through another season before we do something drastic like lower the speed limit. We want to monitor, see if all the changes that were put in place are effective. And there may be a few more amendments that need to take place in the area, whether there's some trees or something need to come down, but we would like to go through another season before we change the speed limit.
All right. Is there anybody else on the floor? I know councillor Van Staappen would like to speak on it. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I think all our communities are experiencing problems one way or another with traffic, and we can blame them on faster cars, we can blame on GPS, we can blame it on people in a hurry. We've identified these two intersections, we've had a major increase in accidents, and I respect the comments that have been made, because I would not accept a thing that we're not going to do anything about it. We've had, and the beauty of this report, it identified the causes of where the problems came from, notably that people are running stop signs. As a township, we've done bigger signs, we've done speed reduction on the egress and exits. So I think we're on the right track, but I do not wish this issue to be dropped off quickly, and I think it's important we continue to monitor it to avoid what could happen in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to this matter? Okay. Seeing none, I would like to ask a question to the director. Mister Director, in the report, it does say that the, you will be looking to monitor the situation, you're looking for additional time to assess the road improvements that have been put together in collaboration with the Township of Clearview. I can assure you that the Council of Clearview Council and citizenry are pretty keen on this intersection. There's been significant number of accidents that have proven that there are visitors to our community that are traveling to other communities, are traveling through this intersection and the 3-4 side road intersection with, you know, lack of regard for their own safety by traveling right through the intersection without checking left and right. So Mister, to the staff, either yourself, Mister Director, or I see Christian is with us, is there anything further that you can do as staff to help us mitigate the impact on this intersection and the unfortunate situation of accidents continuing to occur?
Thank you, through the chair. I'm actually going to invite Director Miele to speak to that. We have been working closely with the local staff as well, and as outlined in the report, a number of mitigating measures have been put in place, but that happened around September, and, you know, the report also outlines that the majority of the incidents were on weekends during the summer where traffic was either traveling to or from the GTA. So we believe these mitigating measures will be helpful, but until we see that traffic flow again through the seasonality that we're trying to monitor, we'd like a little bit more time to assess that. We're very concerned about the reduction from 80 to 60 along County Road 9. It would result in a traffic flow that goes from 60 to 80, back to 60, back up to 80. And we know that people travel based on the design criteria of the roads, and then you're going to get more conflicting traffic. Some might follow the 60 limit, majority will not. So with that, I might ask Director Miele to speak to some of the other measures that might be available to us. Thank you.
Mister Miele?
Thank you, and good morning, through the chair. I think, as mentioned, really the issues at County Road 9 are right of way control at the intersections. As mentioned, we've done a lot of improvements there, we think they'll have a positive outcome. In terms of next steps, potentially, if it remains to, or continues to be a problem, we'd be looking at things like perhaps flashing beacons at the intersection to identify right of way control. Next steps may include a four-way stop or additional measures at the intersection to direct traffic in terms of identifying who has the right of way at the four-way intersection the way it sits there today.
All right. Thank you very much, and I do look forward to future reports on this. The last time we had a discussion at this council, and that's this committee, about speed reduction, I asked a question to the staff, and through, with your pleasure, I'd like to ask another question, about the tools that you use to assess our roads. The TAC report and that entire committee, I think I made a point about it almost a year ago, that this data and this data set and this use of tool is governed by an authority that does not have any rural roads authorities in it. It has all major urban centers across Canada, including Calgary and Edmonton, Halifax, Metropolitan Toronto, and the closest thing to a rural community in that tool was none of it. And so I asked if our staff were involved in getting involved in participating in this, representing rural communities in Canada to help mitigate some of the decisions that are made with these tools. And so Mister Elliott, is there any further work on that?
Yes, through the chair. I'm going to direct this back to Director Miele, please.
Thank you, and back to the chair. We're certainly involved in the TAC, the Transportation Association of Canada committees. We don't, we don't get involved on the federal level. Specifically to this tool, though, it does consider rural communities. There's a number of factors that are considered as part of speed limit control that have an impact, or being in a rural community certainly has an impact. So specific to this tool, it does take that into consideration.
Okay, I'm glad you feel that way. I don't have anything further to say on the issue. I do look forward to the results of time passing and let us see how this intersection does prevail. Is anybody else on the floor? All right, seeing none, we've got a mover and secondary, and I'm prepared to call the motion. Those in favor? Are there any opposed? Carry, thank you very much. That is it, I believe. Mister Warden, for my, oh, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. 24.1, Agricultural Liaisonal Committee, uh, let's see here, yes, it's the report from the 18th of December 2023. I'll look for a mover and secondary on this motion. Is there a mover on this? Thank you. Mister Fowler and Mister Cabrel, that recommendation is contained within the Agricultural Liaisonal Committee Report dated December 18, 2023, be approved? Any questions? Yes? Nope, seeing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor? Thank you. That also carries. And is there any other matters for Corporate Services? And seeing none, it's been my pleasure to be the chair, and I'll pass it back to the warden.
Thank you, Chair Meers. There's never a lot of discussion on governance or waste management or anything like that, so nicely done, sir.
Don't bring up waste management.
So now, we're making good time, so I'm going to turn it over to Chair Cox for Performance Management.
Good morning, everyone. Happy New Year. We'll start the performance management with the consent agenda. I'd like a mover and a secondary, please. Moved by Deputy Warden Coghlan, seconded by councillor Evans, that the following consent item, having been due consideration, be received. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. Okay, now we'll go to 26.1, the borrowing bylaw. May I have a mover and a secondary, please? Moved by councillor Fryer, seconded by councillor, oops, Rossen, sorry.[1777.12] That recommendation, item CCW 2024-008 dated January 9, 2024, regarding the borrowing bylaw be received, and that the necessary bylaw be presented to County Council substantively in the form attached to Schedule 1 of item CCW 2024-008, to allow the county to borrow temporarily on its line of credits as may be necessary during the year to meet its current payment obligations. Any questions? Comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Oh, did you, I'm sorry. No, you were just getting ready to all in favor? Sorry.
I was just trying to find it quickly, and I thought it was under the borrowing bylaw. And I present this as far as the 5% we invest money right now.
I'll get Leland to come down.
Well, Leland, is Leland there?
Yep.
And I believe this was under our borrowing bylaw. And I'll keep looking for it, but I was.
So Trevor, did you want to, or will we go through Leland?
Just a quick question. I'll refer it to Mr. Sebeck. In the report, it said that we are being paid 5% below prime on our investments. Is that correct?
Through the Chair, no, we're being paid on our investments, 0.6, sorry, 1% below prime.
Okay, in the document, I'll find it and I'll refer it back to you, but it's, at one point, it did say 5 below prime for one figure, and I was a little concerned about that. I will find it.
Go ahead, Trevor.
Through the Chair. Thank you. Happy New Year, everybody. It does say, Leland, if you refer to the background, the financial implications, financial and resource implications. Currently, the county has a positive bank balance earning prime minus 5.25. Is that a typo, then?
Yes, correct, it's a typo. Currently, we're earning 5.25%.
So it shouldn't say minus, it just should say that we're earning 5.25.
I got it between Stephanie and him.
So it's not a minus.
Did you find it there?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we didn't catch that.
It scared me when it said we're minus 5.
Thank you very much, Councillor Van Staveren.
We're not paying the banks.
Well, in a certain banking relationships, until you're, the borrowing levels or the prime reaches, you do not get interest on your investments. Well, we're well above that now.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Any other matters for consideration in performance management? Thank you very much. I'll turn it back to the Warden. Do I have to do again?
You did the vote, did you?
Yeah.
Okay, then.
Then he had his hand up as a vote. Do we do it again? Okay, we'll do the vote again. All in favor? He's got it right. Thank you.
Okay, closed session. I have none where it's only just after 10:00, so let's continue and wrap up our meeting, and everybody can try and beat the storm home except the Economic Development Committee that'll be here with me. So I will look for a motion, the committee, the whole rise, and reconvene its council. Moved by Councillor Van Staveren, seconded by Councillor Fowler. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. That's a minute. So I need the committee reports now, so I'll see if I can find it. I would go to Councillor Cox.
Okay. Moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Evans, that the performance management recommendations contained within the committee of the whole report dated January 9, 2024 be approved. Questions? Comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you.
That is carried. Thank you. That's okay, you're quick on the draw, and I don't mind. So Chair McDonald, if you would do Committee of the Whole Human Services.
Moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Michael Smith, that the Human Services recommendation contained within the committee of the whole report dated January 9, 2024 be approved.
Everybody has heard the motion? All in favor? That is carried. And now Corporate, Chair Meers.
Thank you. This is the Corporate Services for January 9. It'll be moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Fryer, that Corporate Services recommendations contained within the committee of the whole report dated January 9, 2024 be approved.
Okay, thank you. Anything to be pulled on that? So all in favor of the motion? That is carried. Thank you. So consideration of bills, Councillor Burkett.
Thank you through you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Rossen, that Bill Number 7045-24, a bylaw to appoint Patrick Trafford as deputy clerk for the County of Simcoe.
I think you have two of them there, too, and Bill Number, or they're separate ones, separate motions, yes. So everybody's heard that motion? All in favor? That is carried. Sorry, my script is slightly different. Go ahead, councillor.
Through you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor La Rose, that Bill Number 7046-24, a bylaw to authorize the borrowing of 208,575,000 and to repeal by law Number 6991, item CCW 2024-008.
Everybody's heard that motion? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Do I have any announcements, members of council? Councillors now.
Thank you through your worship. I just wanted to follow up, sort of circle back to our conversation that we had when